Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our historic city council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Carmona.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Perfect, thank you. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk. We are at Proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight, and I've asked several council members to assist in reading those proclamations. Our first proclamation presented by the city is celebrating Juneteenth. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Juneteenth, also called Emancipation Day and Freedom Day, commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States. It is observed annually on June 19th. And whereas, on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to end slavery in the United States. And whereas, more than two years passed before the news reached the enslaved black people in Texas. On June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his soldiers arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas, Juneteenth is a day for us all to reflect on what has happened since 1865 and to celebrate the social, economic, and cultural contributions of African-Americans in the United States. And whereas, on June 16th, 2021, Governor J.B. Prisker signed House Bill 3992, naming Juneteenth as National Freedom Day, designated it as a state holiday. And whereas, on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed legislation into law establishing June 19th as Juneteenth National Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally-celebrated commemoration of ending slavery. The city of Peoria stands in solidarity with our African-American community, and we encourage the public to attend one of these events celebrating this day. Now, therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge and celebrate June 19th as Juneteenth in Peoria, Illinois dated this day, 10th of June 25, AD.
Thank you. Our next proclamation celebrates Pride Month, and we have Cassie Lu... excuse me, Lukeyzie, President of Peoria Proud, and Jake Bowers, the Treasurer of Peoria Proud. Can you come forth to the podium? Thank you for being here. Whereas the city of Peoria celebrates diversity and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our community. Whereas on June 28th, 1969, the riots at Stonewall Inn in New York City are widely considered the beginning of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ rights movement. During Pride Month, we celebrate and honor LGBTQ+ neighbors, friends, and family, and remember the events of June 1969. On June 28th, the city of Peoria will light the Mary Baker Bridge in rainbow colors to acknowledge this pivotal anniversary. And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have made immeasurable impacts to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country, and the fight for equality and human rights is ongoing. Progress continues to be made and sustained by individuals who stand up, speak out, and share their stories. And whereas celebrating Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the city of Peoria's LGBTQ+ community, it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. The city of Peoria supports the rights of all community members to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. Now, therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the month of June as Pride Month in Peoria. Cassie, Jake? You gotta say something.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you, city council members. We are proud to live in a city that not only recognizes and welcomes but affirms LGBTQ+ people and all minority groups alike. Thank you for the recognition of the Stonewall Riots that kickstarted the LGBTQ civil rights movement in 1969 by lighting the Mary Baker Bridge. And that will be on the anniversary on the 28th. Please join us at all of the events that we have coming up. You can find them on our Facebook page and on our website. But specifically, Pride Night at the Chiefs will be the 27th of this month, and then next month, we'll celebrate River City Pride Festival July 18th, 19th, and 20th this year. So please join us if you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next proclamation recognizes migraine and headache awareness month, and we have Alicia Friedman, the Headache on the Hill State Captain. Is Alicia here? Please come forward, and Councilman Zach Euler will read the proclamation. Uh-oh, there we go.
Whereas headache diseases affect more than 40 million Americans, including approximately 4 million who regularly experience chronic migraines. And whereas headache diseases are among the leading causes of disability globally, disproportionately impacting women, veterans, and historically marginalized communities, and there are significant disparities in diagnosis, treatment, and outcomes for Black, Hispanic, and Native/Indigenous populations suffering from headache diseases. And whereas stigma and misinformation related to headache diseases have stifled research and advances in treatment, with only 800 certified headache medicine specialists nationwide, there are significant barriers to care, leaving many patients undiagnosed and untreated. And whereas all people living with headache diseases deserve fair, equitable, timely, and affordable access to innovative and effective treatments that will improve their quality of life. Now, therefore Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, does hereby recognize the month of June as migraine and headache awareness month in Peoria, Illinois dated this 10th day of June 2025.
Friedman.
Mayor Ali, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to have this disease recognized and the word getting out. I live with chronic migraine disease. I actually have three different diagnoses currently. I am chronic intractable status migraineosis, which is a real fancy way of saying I have pain every single day. I am one of those people that is looking for more research because every treatment that they offer for migraine and some that are used off-label have all failed me. I have nothing that gets rid of my pain. So, being able to just come speak about it is a great step for us because we are told it's just a headache. Have you tried drinking more water? But have you tried yoga? Yes, if it has been suggested, no matter how ridiculous it sounds, we have tried it, and we still don't get the treatment that we need. So, my title this year references Headache on the Hill. I go every March out to Capitol Hill and then virtually in September, and we lobby for legislation that helps those living with migraine and headache disease, as well as other diseases. And I'm also very excited this year, this fall. There has been headache-specific legislation just introduced that will start a new Headache Forum group nationwide. So, thank you so much for recognizing us.
Thank you for your leadership, because it's not just helping you, it's helping so many others. We pray for your recovery and a solution. Thank you. Our last proclamation recognizes the 50th anniversary of the National Association of Women Business Owners, or NABO. And we have Michelle Rollin. She is the president of the Central Illinois Chapter of the National Association of Women Business Owners. Welcome back. We will have Councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young to share the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas in 1975, a dozen like-minded businesswomen in Washington DC area convened to share information, create an atmosphere of professional community, and further and strengthen their entrepreneurial interest. And whereas originally known as the Association of Women Business Owners, this group organized a national network of chapters known as the National Association of Women Business Owners, NABO, with the Central Illinois Chapter becoming the third member to join the organization in 1979. And whereas, NABO propels women entrepreneurs into economic, social, and political spheres of power worldwide by educating and equipping them to be community leaders and promoting economic development within the entrepreneurial community. And whereas, NABO works to empower all women entrepreneurs regardless of race, religion, age, sexual orientation, national origin, or disability, and create innovative and effective change in the business culture by building strategic alliances, coalitions, and affiliations. Now, therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the National Association of Women Business Owners in Peoria, Illinois dated this 10th day of June 2025, AD.
Here it is, a long time. Rollin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilwoman...people. Council people. We just got back from DC celebrating that 50th year for National Association of Women Business Owners, and we are really proud that our chapter, our Central Illinois Chapter, is the third oldest in the country, which is crazy, right? And NABO was instrumental in starting the HR 50/50, passing that, which means a woman in 1988 could finally get a loan for a car, a business, a credit card, without having a male family member sign off, co-sign, which sometimes meant your 17-year-old son would have to get taken out of high school to sign for you. So, we are so proud of our organization that we celebrated 50 years, and we hope to be here in two more years because, Central Illinois, that will be our 50th. So, thank you so much for the recognition.
Congratulations. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are at the Approval of the Minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held May 27th, 2025, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We have two town items. 25-141 is a request from the town officials to approve the May 2025 actual expenditures and to approve the June 2025 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
I move to approve item 25-141.
Seconded by Council trustee Allen. Sorry about that. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
25-142 is a request from the town officials to approve a resolution certifying the submission of an advisory question of public policy to electors at the March 17th, 2026 general election approved by the town electors at the April 8th, 2025 annual town meeting.
Trustee Gordon Young.
I move to approve item 25-142.
Seconded by trustee Allen. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're on to the consent agenda. 25-143 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to approve a membership to the Only River Cities and Towns Initiative in the amount of $22,630. 25-144 is a communication with a request to accept a dedication deed from Schick Apartments LLC for additional right-of-way along Persimmon to accommodate angled parking and shifted sidewalk and to reduce the proposed building setback. 25-145 is a communication with a request to authorize the payment of a workers' compensation award of $169,286.35 to a police officer injured on June 17th, 2020. 25-146 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of R.A. Cullen &amp; Sons, a division of UCM Inc., and award a contract for the Seal Coating Contract 2025 Project in the amount of $586,218.40, with an additional authorization of $58,631.60 for contingencies, for a total amount of $644,850. And 25-147 is a communication with a request to approve a one-year contract with Lexipol for law enforcement policy management in an amount not to exceed $92,000. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 25-143, please.
Thank you. Are there any items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
25-143 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to approve a membership to the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative in the amount of $22,630.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, how much money are we spending on the...or investing in the CSO and our 18-year agreement with the EPA?
Overall, it's going to...
Ballpark.
It's going to be well over 200 million. Probably with inflation, it'll be even more than that.
Of the 18 cities in this agreement, how many of them have any type of agreement with the EPA for clean water?
It would be us.
That's it. So, really, $22,000, Madam Mayor, doesn't mean anything in a budget of $250 million. But to me, it's just...I just can't vote for it because of all the money we as a city already spend. We'll spend over $300 million in the CSO with all these cities not really helping us out. So, that's why I just can't vote for this item. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you know, this is an opportunity to bring economic development to our river city and to actually advocate for our river, the cleanliness of our river, as well as working with our regional cities to improve the opportunities. I have asked, and I was going to save it for a public comment, but I have asked Colonel Sinkler and Dr. Singh to provide some additional information on the Illinois Rivers Initiative...excuse me, Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiatives.
Yeah, I'm Bob Sinkler. I do some work with the Illinois Waterway Ports Commission, which is headquartered here in Peoria. I've been working on the Upper Mississippi River issue, Upper Mississippi River issues since about 2006. I commanded the Rock Island District of the Corps of Engineers, which was responsible for the Illinois River and Waterway. I was a founding board member of America's Watershed Initiative, which was charting the course for the future of the Mississippi River watershed. I currently serve on the board of the Upper Mississippi Illinois Reserve Rivers Association, and I also serve on the board of the National Waterways Conference. And one thing I noticed several years ago was that there was a Great Lakes Cities Organization that represents over 200...over 200 organizations?
Yeah, 265 mayors along the Great Lakes and St. Louis cities. It's by...it's international organization between Canada and US.
And then there's Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, which has about 100 and over 100.
106.
Yeah. And I'll introduce Dr. Anshu Singh here in a minute. But I also served as the Strategic Advisor for the Commander of the US Army Corps of Engineers in Washington DC, and what was very...and that was before I left the military. And what I noticed was that the Illinois River and Waterway was under-resourced, underfunded, did not have the same visibility as other major river systems in the US. And I can show that very easily. The documentation's pretty...and it's there. For example, I'll just use this as an example. There's $192 million worth of ecosystem restoration projects that are approved for construction under the Upper Mississippi River Restoration Program between Iowa and Illinois in the Quad Cities region, and there was zero...there was zero when we...before we started the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative on the Illinois River. And we want to bring that back into balance. So, what...it was just the idea of the Illinois Waterway Ports Commission was to try and help stand up and support the establishment of the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative to raise our voice, raise our profile, be able to influence national funding and policy decisions, and also leverage a relationship with the Illinois River...I mean, the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative and the Great Lakes Organization. And the whole effort is just to bring more investment back into the region. We, a collective, we, by forming a 10-county port entity on the Illinois Waterway helped attract over $1 billion worth of investment since 2019 in the Illinois Waterway. We want to bring additional investment into our cities. And to do that, it helps if you've got an organized city organization that's focused not just on clean water and not just on the normal water infrastructure that supports city operations, but all aspects of water resources infrastructure. So, that's a little background behind it. Dr. Anshu Singh, I'm going to introduce her. She's really runs the operation, the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative. Her husband works for John Deere in the Quad Cities. She's got a master's degree in agriculture from India's leading ag university, recently finished her PhD in large river ecosystems from Western Illinois University, and she is the executive director of the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative.
Yeah, and I just say, we already have these two successful models in front of us, the Great Lakes Cities and Town Initiative on the Great Lakes and the Mississippi River Cities and Town Initiative. More than 106 mayors are part of that organization from Minnesota to Louisiana. And our Illinois River is very strategically located, connecting these two major freshwater bodies. So, I feel this was the IRCTI, Illinois River Cities and Town Initiative was that missing link, which can help raise the profile of our region. And like for the Great Lakes, it was Mayor of Chicago, Mayor Daley, who took the lead in creating that organization in 2003. MRCTI, Mississippi River Cities and Town Initiative, it was started in 2013 under the leadership of Mayor Slay of St. Louis. So, I feel here, being Peoria, being the largest city on the Illinois River, it's Peoria...Peoria should take the lead, and I'm really appreciative of the leadership of Mayor Ali. As of now, we have more than 12 mayors on the Illinois River agreed to be member of this organization. We have already had three of our board meetings. Community Foundation of Central Illinois, Peoria, have agreed to be the fiscal sponsor for this organization. We are already working with Greater Peoria. So, we have achieved a lot in just in last five months. So, and I have...I think IRCTI has a lot of potential to influence policies at regional and national level. It will increase the profile, elevate the profile of our region, and it will bring like much overdue investment and infrastructure investment to the region.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere yet, but thank you for your leadership, Dr. Singh and Colonel Sinkler. This is really an opportunity, as they said, to bring investment to our city and resources for our river. One opportunity that they were looking at, we don't have a riverboat currently on the river, so they were looking at working with a major cruise line to provide cruises. They can tell you the destinations. I don't really recall. I think up to St. Paul, Minnesota, or somewhere, but cruises from Peoria, as well as excursions, daily excursions, is what they're looking at. So, these are the types of opportunities that are being explored through this initiative as well. Did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, we are already talking to American Cruise Line. Kristin Meera is the executive director for American Cruise Line. As of now, they are not focusing on this region, but I'm sure by persuading and following up, at least we are there to talk to them, and I'm already talking to them from last three months. So, I feel American Cruise Line, they...and Bob has a really good relationship with Kristin Meera. They both work on the National Waterway Conference Board, and I think Bob also have an itinerary, like from where it should start, from Chicago to Ottawa to go to St. Louis.
Yeah, so, as everyone's aware, we no longer have a cruise boat on the Illinois River. We used to. The American Queen used to visit. So, we put together our itinerary, and includes Havana, includes Peoria, includes Ottawa. The plan is to fly people into Chicago, get on the American Cruise Boat in Ottawa, and then go down the Illinois River. Some discussion about whether it stops in St. Louis or it goes up to Minneapolis, St. Paul. But that's what we...right now, we've got several now, American Cruise Boats on the Mississippi River. Just another example of where the Mississippi River is taking advantage of some of these opportunities, and the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative can kind of help steer some resources this direction. So, but I do serve on the...the...one of the government relations person, Karen Myrna?
Kristin?
Kristin Myrna. Sorry, but I serve on the board of the National Waterways Conference with her, and she's the one that we would have to work through to get that going on the Illinois River. And that directly, you know, supports tourism, recreation, and supports our communities on the river.
Thank you. I think there might be some questions. Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I wanted to thank you for bringing this forward, and while I certainly appreciate Councilman Seer's remarks, I think we have to remember, as Dr. Singh said, we are the largest city on the river, and... as Dr. Singh said, we are the largest city on the river. And that brings with it certain responsibility. And we'll be having a policy session next week about another area that we're called on to be the leader. And sometimes it gets uncomfortable, but I think this sounds like something that we can wrap our arms around. And having cities peak in East Peoria, Ottawa, Morris, Peru, La Salle, Beardstown, among others, if we weren't there, that would be a big gap. So thank you for the leadership you two have provided thus far. And we look forward to seeing the fruits of the initiative going forward.
Thank you.
And I would make a motion to approve if that's appropriate.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Continued discussion. Councilmember Carmona?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna have to agree with Councilman Seer on this. Even though this twenty-two thousand dollars is really a small drop in the bucket of what we spend as a city, I would much rather us be, you know, business-friendly and look forward to growing our economy in ways that, you know, don't cause us, cost us money. Because I, I think that, you know, we all know that we're gonna have rainy days ahead with our budget. Like I said, it's a small drop in the bucket, but I just can't support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was glad that you brought up the issue with regards to the old spirit of Peoria. Because I certainly miss the boat. I think there's a reason we are called the River City. And back in 2009, we had our annual family reunion. We have it every Memorial Day year. And we brought, oh, well over three hundred, four hundred people to Peoria. And I remember distinctly relatives from Memphis talking about how much they enjoyed hosting the family reunion on the Spirit of Peoria. And I don't remember how much we paid. I was, was I on the committee? Well, it was well over two thousand dollars for usage of the Spirit of Peoria. But I cannot forget the compliments we got from the folks from Memphis saying, how come you've never brought us down on your riverfront? This is so beautiful. They talked and talked and talked and talked about that cruise on the Spirit of Peoria. And so I've always, it was an opportunity to do something different. And I see this, the lack of a boat would mean the loss of additional revenue for events like family reunions and parties. And back in the day, mayor, I can remember groups hosting the boat to take parties and cruises out on the river. So for me, twenty-two thousand dollars is just a drop in the bucket with the earning potential we could potentially gain with a boat back on the, our riverfront. And the people that miss it and that would take advantage of it. So I think it's a big investment that will pay off greatly for tourism, especially in the River City here in Peoria. So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. This initiative is going to attract millions of dollars to Peoria and the Peoria region. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share, I am not at all skeptical of the intent of this group. I am a little skeptical of what it can actually do. As far as the riverboat is concerned, we had a riverboat that was stationed in Peoria, and it moved in and out of Peoria. And it was very popular. It made a lot of money. Okay? It was not part, it was not a stop on a cruise line going from Ottawa to St. Louis or, we had our own deal. And I think we're still working very hard on having that done. A cruise line would be nice, but a, a boat here would be better. Is, I, is it the major accomplishment of these other groups to lobby in D.C. to get money for something? Is that, is that the idea?
Yeah. So the cruise boat initiative is only a small...
Never mind the cruise boat, but, you know, just in general.
It's only a small, one of the, one of the many projects that the organization would be focused on. But yeah, the other two organizations, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative and the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative have well, for well over a decade, have been bringing a lot of increased investment tailored for their riverfront communities. And by forming the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative, it allows us to tap into the two largest freshwater city organizations that are right now influencing national and global policy in some cases. And so it's, it's really is, what we're doing is just taking, creating a situation where our less than fifteen mayors on the Illinois Waterway, their voices amplified and can take advantage of the increased investment, improved influence on policy, federal policy changes to influence and support riverfront communities. So, so there's a strategic leveraging aspect of this, too. The Illinois River is, is very important to the state of Illinois. Ninety percent of the population of the state of Illinois lives in the watershed or county, you know, that's part of the watershed. Forty-four percent of the state's land area is in the Illinois River basin, forty-six percent of its agricultural production. So what we lacked, we've made a lot of progress over the last few years by strengthening the Illinois River team. But what we lacked was a cities organization like the Great Lakes and the Mississippi River has. So by creating the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative, it allows us to really influence policy and puts us on par with the other major freshwater influencers in the, in the U.S. So if that helps, then we're experts at, we're, when I say experts, I think we've been able to demonstrate this, we are experts at being able to influence a federal, federal policy, federal funding in a way that brings more investment back into the region. That's, that's what the Corbenel Port, the four Corbenel Port regions, the Illinois Waterway Ports Commission is one of them. And for us to be able to tap into more federal resources and dollars, having a city organization will enable us to do that. And we've, we've, we've demonstrated up until this point, and I'm not, I'm not saying this is gonna be the case with the Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative, but it sure could be. But for every dollar that's been invested in the Illinois Waterway Ports Commission, there's been a six-hundred percent return on investment over five years, of investment coming back into the region. So, so that's what we're really looking for, is to be able to come back to all of the cities in a few years and say, hey, for this minimal amount of investment, this is what has come back into the Illinois River and to support our cities. So.
Thank you, Colonel.
And just some Mississippi River Cities and Town Initiative, they even have a Mississippi River Caucus in, on the hill in D.C., which advocates for more trade development funds for, for Mississippi River Cities and Towns. They have done a great job bringing more money and more attention from FEMA and USDA as well. And I'll just take this opportunity to tell everyone that Illinois River is part of Upper Mississippi River System, U M R S. When we say Upper Mississippi River System, most of the people think that it's just the Upper Mississippi River. Illinois River is also part of that. And in nineteen eighty-six, as per the Congress, they have designated it as a nationally significant ecosystem, as well as a nationally significant navigation system. So I feel we have not, like Mississippi River, M R C T I is advocating very well on the Mississippi River. We are missing a national level group to advocate for Illinois River. And that's where I feel the I R C T I will fill that gap.
Thank you, Dr. Singh. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think I'm gonna get an answer to my question. But you do speak about ecology. You said there's nothing on the Illinois River. There's Amiquan, which is a fantastic thing that was done privately, publicly, et cetera. We also have lobbying here. We have, you know, the normal things. I, I, just because this is a small amount of money, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it. But I don't, I just don't, we need to have, in my opinion, and this is not your problem, we need to have a better product here. And that's up to the people around this horseshoe. We have a better product, we will get investment. If it's forced investment from somebody else, it often doesn't work. We've got legislators from here. We've got state, state government reps from here, et cetera. One more agency, I don't know what it's really gonna do. I do not for one moment question your advocacy or your intentions. I just think it's, it's one more thing that we belong to. And we, as a city, we're not growing. We, as a state, are not growing. You know, I think those are the things that we really need to address around here. And, and okay, God bless you. Okay? Thanks very much.
Thank, thank you so much. I just add, the Upper Mississippi River System, which I talked about. So Congress already authorized the U M R R, Upper Mississippi River Restoration Program, thirty-three million dollar it gets every year from last thirty years. In last three years, that thirty-three million increased to fifty-five and then to ninety million. And that U M R R program is for both Upper Mississippi River as well as for Illinois River. And you are right that Amiquan is there. T N C takes care of that. But still out of that thirty-three million, logically, at least eleven million should come to Illinois River. But in those meetings where the Corps of Engineers make decision which project will go in which area, no one was there to advocate for Illinois River. Like, I literally sat with those Illinois D N R guys, and we identified fifty ecosystem restoration projects, and we made sure that Corps of Engineers put that into their system. Even Congressman Sorensen was there in our office, and we showed him where we have identified those projects.
Thank you, Dr. Singh.
Yeah. So I feel that advocacy was missing.
Yeah. Just, I know I wanted to, gotta answer your question. But when I left the military, I worked for the Nature Conservancy. I was the Water Resources Infrastructure Director for the Nature Conservancy's North America Freshwater Program, funded by Caterpillar, my position was. And I had an office at Bradley University. And I was heavily involved with Amiquan in getting that going. One of the big challenges that we've had, and one of the reasons that we had to rely on the Nature Conservancy and Caterpillar to fund that project, is because we were not effectively taking advantage of federal dollars that were available. And what, what's gonna change, what's gonna happen is, it's gotta be, because there's not a lot of federally owned land on the Illinois River, and it's all privately owned, it's gonna take some initiative to, and this is where the organizations, the cities are gonna have to help influence this. But we need the Corps of Engineers to change their policy of focusing on big projects. We need more smaller projects, because it's tailored more for the Illinois River. We need more projects in urban areas. And we need more innovative delivery of projects. And we're working with the Ducks Unlimited right now to, to enable the Ducks Unlimited to deliver projects for the Corps. So the Illinois River is unique in so many different ways that there has to be a tailored program for the Illinois River to take advantage of some of the funding that's available. So, and that requires a little bit of work. So, but we are passionate about what we're doing. But we're not trying to, we don't wanna, we're not trying to sell the city on anything. We just want to serve the Illinois River.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. Anything else? Councilmember Kelly?
No. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, is the membership rate, is that an annual rate that we'll pay each year?
That's correct.
And so that'd give us an opportunity. Each year, we can invite our friends back to provide a report out, and we can see what we're getting for our investment in this initiative.
Absolutely.
And I'm very confident in your leadership, Mayor Ali, ensuring that we're being stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And then also, I find it very exciting that we're gonna have fifteen municipalities a part of this initiative as we look to advocate and bring resources back to one of the most precious assets that we have in our community, and that is our river. So thank you all for your presentation today. I appreciate the questions and also the concerns that my colleagues around the horseshoe presented this evening. But I'll be supporting this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one clarification question. I see this initiative was founded in 2012. What, what has been done from then? What are some of the most important things that have been done in the last thirteen years?
So this is new initiative. It's just five months we are in Illinois River Cities and Town Initiative. 2013 was Mississippi River Cities and Town Initiative. Yeah. Since then, they have, like I said, they now have a Mississippi River Caucus. On the Mississippi River, there is a lot of flooding issues. So the whole, all, all cities can, came together, and they have some flood insurance at very low level. Lot of corporate sponsors are there with M R C T I. And at the USDA policy, they have a lot of prairie, prairie development along the river and more wetland, well, wetland and carbon sequestration along the river so that the flood, flood management can be, can be done along the Mississippi River. They also go to COPs, that climate change conferences in UN, they, like, they are working at the international level now. In last thirteen years, they have reached at that level. Every, every year, they, they go to D.C. for their legislative meetings. Like this, this year, first time, they have invited Illinois River Cities and Town Initiative as well. Their Mayor of Ottawa, Mayor Hasty, went along with us. And we met, even Senator Duckworth is now taking a lot of interest in I R C T I. We met her and Senator Klabachar. And afterwards, Senator Duckworth also asked us to provide, like, what you need from us in terms of developing the I R C T I. So I, I see a lot of influence the M R C T I mayors have on the hill and along the river. And I think together, the I R C T I mayors will have a stronger voice.
First of all, pardon me for misreading that.
No problem.
As you just said, that the Mississippi River Cities and Town Initiative, do you think it brought any financial gain to the Mississippi in the thirteen years? Or it is just there to protect from the environmental factors? Because the, the discussion we are having here is that we will have some financial impact if or when this collaborative organization starts working and you bring some, something back to Peoria. That's our goal. What happens outside Peoria probably is not, that, that doesn't matter to me. But my understanding, or my, I wanted to really understand, what did the initiative do? What kind of financial dollars did it bring it to the Mississippi City with this initiative in the past thirteen years? Because that gives us an understanding of what we could expect. With this new initiative that is going, that you are gonna float, it's a one-year-old baby. So what do you, what do we expect out of it in the next five years?
Okay.
Yeah. So every, every, every federal program that has increased significantly since the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative was created, one of the reasons it was created, Walton Family Foundation kind of helped fund it to get it stood up. But one of the reasons it was stood up is because the Mississippi River, the ten, ten states on the Mississippi River and associated communities, just were not getting the visibility at the national level to affect increased investment. I mean, it's in the tune of billions of dollars that they've helped bring into the Mississippi River corridor. One of the, one of the real innovative things that they've done, and insurance is getting more and more expensive, is they've actually started a program now to, to pool our group cities together to reduce insurance, flood insurance rates for some of the communities that have a flood risk. So they've written, they've lowered, well, this is just to help the communities out. But one example is that they've, which was innovative from my perspective, it wasn't actually bringing more federal investment in. It was pooling our... it wasn't actually bringing more federal investment in, it was pooling our cities grouping together just so they could get a lower insurance rate for their, for their communities. So there's all kinds of innovative things like that going on that we could tap into for the Illinois River when they're working, those kind of issues that would benefit our communities on the river. But I'm, yeah, so, but it's in the tune of, I mean, it's in tune of billions of dollars. From the U S Department of Agriculture, some of their conservation programs, the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative helped increase that. Clearly, a huge increase in nonprofit organization investment. Now there are organizations that have formed, nonprofit organizations that have formed organizations or teams to work the entire Mississippi River. That is a result of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. So leveraging nonprofit organizations like that. And then there's the normal, traditional Corps of Engineer investment through the Corps. And, and clearly FEMA, they're working very closely with FEMA to help reduce costs for, for the community. So, so they, they kind of view the whole Mississippi River now as more of a system. And it's really, and mayors get things done. Everyone, everyone likes, likes it when mayors are, things are led by mayors because they deliver for their communities. And that's why both the Great Lakes and the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative organizations have been so successful because they, they know how to deliver for their, for their communities and, and actually inserted themselves into a lot of the federal decision-making that was going on to more, to, to, so that the, the federal agencies were more attuned to the requirements and needs of the city. So having that voice, I think, is, is very critical to actually deliver things on the ground for communities.
And they also help cities in bringing grants like plastic pollution and all. A lot of cities comes together and then they apply. Even now, we are thinking we can also join M R C T I on some of those grants. And right now, I don't have much information on that, but I know that there is also a trade development fund which they could have created after M R C T I's inception.
There's, there's also a Great Lakes Trade Development Fund that's funded by the Department of Agriculture that, that helps promote businesses, business opportunities along the, you know, on the Great Lakes and on the Mississippi River. So, and that's, that's, that's in the, in legislation, funded in annual appropriations. The Illinois River is left out of that. So by, by creating an Illinois River Cities and Towns Initiative, it allows us to take advantage of, by teaming with the two, the Great Lakes Organization and the Mississippi River Organization, it allows us to take a small percentage of that. If they're willing to give it to us and that all indications are they will, a small percentage of all the funding and grant funding that's coming in to support both those organizations.
Yeah, and as of now, they're working on that freshwater coalition, which we will also be part of. Once we are, we will be there, Illinois River Cities and Town Initiative. And for that, also the advocacy is going on that, that coalition might get some funding from the federal. So if we are part of that, then we will also get the pie, maybe the smaller because we are smaller than the Great Lakes and Mississippi River.
I am not against your initiative. I was just trying to understand what this initiative will bring to Peoria. And I have one more question to Mr. Manager. So are we obligated to pay, do we have a contract or it, it runs every year or it goes year by year?
My understanding is this is an annual contribution that would be made to support the efforts in the, the budget of the organization. It would be member-driven at the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars from the, the communities along the Illinois River and then other corporate sponsorships that they would gain. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love the, the passion tonight, not just from our presenters, but from you, Madam Mayor, and this project. And, and finally, some of my colleagues finally waking up a little bit here just for twenty-two thousand dollars. I get a kick out of how my colleagues are finally awake a little bit. We got this budget coming in, in the fall, so I, I really, I'm, I'm so surprised at this, the quality of discussion tonight on the twenty-two thousand dollar item, so I think it's, I think it's, it's great. But, you know, we gotta move on and, and I gotta call the question. I think we have a motion on the floor. And before you call the question, Madam Mayor, I just wanna say, you know, I, I hope you, I can vote for this, but I hope you get tremendous amount of success. I think we have other pots of money, that is their job to promote Peoria, like, you know, Convention Bureau, Peoria, Chamber of Commerce and the Civic Center. I mean, we've got so many organizations out there that's their job to promote Peoria. And this is really go beyond, beyond Peoria, so best of luck. I mean, nobody knows about the future. I doubt, I don't like it when people, millions of dollars will come to Peoria. I hope it's true, I hope it's true, but we just don't know about the future. But I think I'd like to, to, to call the question, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Carmona?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, and sorry, I don't wanna make this any longer. I just had a simple question. How many cities have already signed on to be a part of this?
Are you saying point of order? All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Okay, there is a motion on the floor to call the question, is that right? Can we go ahead and vote? We can go ahead and vote, council.
Vote on the motion to call the question.
We have to vote on the call the question, okay. Let's vote on calling the question, please. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have a motion on the floor to approve the item. We have a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with two nays, Seer and Carmona. Thank you, Dr. Singh and Colonel Sinkler. Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk?
We're at regular business. Twenty-five dash one forty-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with requests for the following. A, approve an incumbency certificate and resolution accepting a grant increase and extension from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program Round Two in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria twenty-twenty-five revised budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of the Ida Homeowner Assistance Grant in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And Item B requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, no less than six votes, and we need separate votes on each, please.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Doolin.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. The item in front of you, the main reason that we wanted to put it in regular item is to really kind of celebrate the success of our staff because this really is a fantastic reflection of their work. The City of Peoria previously received about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars in a Strong Communities Program grant for demolition in the City of Peoria. Multiple communities throughout Illinois receive similar grants from Ida. Ida is under a little bit of time crunch because they have to spend these funds because they're part of the State of Illinois Allocation of American Rescue Plan money. And a lot of communities, fortunately for us, did not move as quickly to spend their funds. So they took back some funds, they had some additional funds, and they approached us and a few different grantees and said, we really appreciate how quickly you spent the funds. If you had more funds, could you spend them also quickly? And we said absolutely. So just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our community development and our legal department staff for all their work on demolitions. Over the last ten years, we have really stepped up our demolition efforts. We ran some numbers today. Over the last ten years, we've torn down about nine hundred and fifty vacant abandoned houses in our community. But really, the, the remarkable thing in the last three years, we've torn down about four hundred and fifty of those nine hundred houses. So their work does not go unnoticed. We really appreciate all of our staff's efforts. And I would like to see if Corporation Counsel would also like to mention, I think, his staff a little bit. I think often our legal department, who does all of this paperwork for us, doesn't quite get the praise. So this is a great opportunity, so I would, if it's all right, Mayor, hand it over to Corporation Counsel to say a few words.
Any questions for Director Doolin? This is exciting. Councilmember Seer?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question and comment, really. Congratulations, Director Doolin, all the work you've done and your staff over the last many years. My only question is, do we have any plans? I mean, that's a thousand empty lots. Excuse me, we're looking at another hundred possibly, and I don't know what the number was for that, about ten thousand dollars apiece roughly on average. Do we have any, I mean, this, this is a lot of properties. Can, what is the goal for the future next, with these properties, next four years, ten years? I mean, do we, do we have a goal?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that really our, our efforts have been to get caught up in the demo process and to get properties down. And we're just starting to see some really positive momentum to then transfer those lots into actual housing. About three months ago, Churchview Gardens down on the South End off of Anne Street broke ground and that's gonna be about sixty units of affordable housing in the next month or two, where we tore down McKinley Habitat will break ground. They, we got a congressional earmark, some home funds. Probably when that project's all said and done, about three years from now, there'll be about twenty homeowners living in that area in brand-new construction. The goal is to really kind of tear these houses down into clusters. I mean, that's the strategic goal. You know, often we think about it in, in a way of kind of what can we do to get development? I think on the individual level, when you live by a vacant or blighted house, you don't really care about future development, you've just had a house that's been a target for arson. So we've been able to address that concern with all these, but we've also been able to accumulate multiple properties together. And that's the only way we're really gonna attract some development and really attract more housing opportunities to people that are in older neighborhoods.
Thank you, Director, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions for Director Doolin. I have been involved with the Land Bank, I think, for the last four years. And could you talk to how the Land Bank has earmarked certain properties in hopes of making them more attractive for redevelopment to potential developers? And, and maybe a little bit more about the importance of infrastructure improvements in and around these areas as another means for making these areas attractive to potential developers?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, really the goal of the Land Bank is to accumulate property that's continuous together. That's really where we saw the interest with Churchview Gardens is that there is a bunch of vacant lots together, also around the Garden of Hope area. And so the McKinley project will be successful because we'll be able to really carve out additional housing and create more dense neighborhood down in the South End with homeownership opportunities. So really what the Land Bank has been able to do is really work to kind of proactively identify these areas where we know, we might know of three or four lots on the block and how we can get the rest of the properties. So it's not about just demolition, it's about strategically finding them. And then, yes, I think when you drive kind of specifically in the near South Side where the St. Anne Project is going and where McKinley is going, I think any homeowner that is gonna be a part of the Habitat Project, it will be greatly appreciative of the different stormwater initiatives that have been down there, new curbs, new sidewalks and things like that. A lot of times in the older neighborhoods where you don't see those sidewalk improvements, where you might see newer neighborhoods is because you haven't had that new construction. And part of our, our, with most new construction, we require those sidewalks, we require those infrastructure improvements. But in a lot of these older parts of the city where you haven't seen infill housing yet, you just don't have those improvements. So we're starting to see that and it really is gonna kind of continue the next three or four years as we accumulate property and continue to, to hopefully attract more and more developers to the area.
And if I could just add to that Councilman Seer's question, talks have been ongoing with Ida. We have state roads in and around the first district, in particular, the South Side, that have not had major upgrades. But in my conversation with Ida just about a year ago, they have slated forty-four million dollars of President Biden's infrastructure funds and they have targeted two major thoroughfares, Howett and Lincoln, for major overhaul. So as we look to strategically planned redevelopment, we want to make sure that the state does its due diligence. That has been my concern in my conversations in the past, it's that you cannot continually neglect major state roadways in impoverished areas and expect that developers will want to come and redevelop. So as we look to redevelop, we wanna make sure that these neighborhoods where these demolitions are occurring are getting the infrastructure improvements and enhancements that they so desperately need. So that has been one of my projects over the last four years and I would implore our city manager, if we could get Ida to get on its butt and do what they've promised that they would do with regards to its five-year strategic plan and get some of our major thoroughfares re-hauled so that we can get the building, rebuilding underway. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Director Doolin, for the leadership that Catherine Murphy, Matt Smith and yourself have taken in, in all this. Nine hundred and fifty demos in ten years, that's, that's quite a milestone and that doesn't just happen. And thank you for the reminder to recognize our Corporation Counsel and his team. It's not often we thank the attorneys for anything, so let, let that be duly noted, please, in the, in the, in the minute. Councilman Seer, I think you kind of teed me up when you were saying, I teed as in a good way, about what are we doing with those ninety, nine hundred and fifty demos? I can tell you about thirty-five of them at least. In the East Bluff, P O F, we deeded thirty-five of those lots to P O F for their projects. So we have single-family homes, affordable housing that have been developed there. I'm not sure how many, the Churchview Gardens project that they're working on now acquired, but I think this is just a really, something that we, we can all kind of take a deep breath and, and be proud of because the Land Bank was something that didn't just happen overnight and that it isn't just by demoing properties that they acquire, but as Director Doolin said, strategic acquisition is a key part of that. And that's what makes projects like the sixty units at Churchview Gardens possible. So hats off to, to everybody that's been involved in that. And to get another round of funding from Ida, I think we can be very pleased with that. And with that said, I'd be happy to move for approval of Item A as presented.
Seconded by Council, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I guess I'll continue in my wonderful tradition of being somewhat contrary. First of all, Director Doolin, I, I really think you and your department do a terrific job. I, I truly do. I, you and I and Matt Smith a little bit and myself have talked about the strategic nature of our demolition program. I don't expect you to change it. But it seems as though this is done so that we can show to developers a nice big piece of land on which they can build multifamily housing like Churchview. Now, we did Churchview even though the neighbors did not want Churchview. And they were very loud about the fact that they did not want multifamily housing. They wanted single-family homes, which is a lot tougher, okay? There's all this money that we can get, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars. And it's, it's very hard to turn it down. But the great bulk of the older part of the City of Peoria were single-family homes. And there was a density there that allowed neighborhoods to develop, et cetera. There are families living there, people watch out for their, each other's kid, you know, all, all that, all that stuff. But now we're so much smarter, we're gonna stack them up, you know, and how, how We're going to stack them up, you know, and how, how many housing projects in this country have been blown up because they were so terrible? How many housing projects in Peoria, Illinois, have we done away with and built? Now we're smarter. Now, now, now we're going to do it better, you know? I don't doubt the sincerity of any of the people involved, but I wish we would have a little bit more concentration on what really builds a neighborhood. Instead of how can we get investors from New Jersey to come here and make riskless investments until their tax credits run out and the, and the place becomes a disaster? So thank you for indulging me in my editorial. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Feel like I'm back on the campaign trail here.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
I'm ready to celebrate, I'm ready to celebrate this success, and I think the demolitions have made way for new housing in Peoria. And, and thank goodness for Churchview Gardens. It's not a project, it's multifamily quality units for individuals on the south side of Peoria, and I'm really happy about that, and, and I think we should celebrate this. So I'm, I'm really pleased. I don't know whether we have a motion yet, but I will certainly invite a motion for Item A.
We do.
Did you do that already? It was just for A?
Yes.
You, you did the motion, okay.
Councilmember Reganbach, seconded by Councilmember Jackson.
Okay, great, all right, fantastic. Councilmember Jackson, did you want to say something else?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One last point to Councilmember Kelly's comment. I think the way we build neighborhoods, and I've heard this from my colleagues, and Andre Allen in District Four, is by providing a combination of different types of housing, rental as well as homeownership. I initially was a part of that discussion, Councilmember Kelly. Where you said, this was before I became a council member, that there were some people initially opposed to rental properties. But I, after, well, well, the type that's going up, but, but what I'm getting at is, when you have a developer and you, you, you live in a community that has developed the infamous distinction of being among one of, among the poorest zip codes in the country, not the, the poorest, but among the poorest, and you have so much poverty that has developed as a result of that, as a, as a result of years and years of disinvestment, and you come to the realization that the folks that are living in that area, they are just a combination of people from variety of incomes, some of which are not in a position to purchase a home right away. So when you have a developer knocking on your door with $25 million, I initially was opposed to Churchview Gardens, but I came to the realization, it's, we had not had any new construction in that area since the Dollar General was built in 2010. And you have a developer knocking on your door with $25 million saying, I would like to do this project. You realize that that is just a small piece of what you hope to be a larger puzzle in the future, a neighborhood that will have a combination of not only rental units, but at some point, we are going to include homeownership. But for the folks who cannot afford to pay that right now, sir, this is a, a start. This is an option. So we don't want to tie our hands and say, we don't want any development unless it's brand-new homes. But if you've got folks knocking on your door with $25 million saying, here, we want to develop, I think it's incumbent upon us to say, wait a minute. Maybe this is part of the impetus for bringing this redevelopment back in a community that had not seen any investment, sir, in 30 or 40 years in terms of brand-new homes outside of Spring Grove. So, so you've got to start somewhere. You've got, and, and certainly rejecting a developer who's got $25 million wanting to invest in your community. I thought about it and changed my mind and said, we've got to start somewhere. So I'm happy, Director Doolin, at the work you all have done. I think this is a process that will go on long after I'm off the scene. I think what we're doing now, we've just begun to start the progress for redevelopment, redevelopment that we hope will continue for the next 10 to 20 to 30 years until we're able to stabilize and see the kind of communities that we hope to see. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Jackson, that was one of the most eloquent rebuttals I've heard. That, that, that exactly hits, it's the nail on the head here, that there is no cookie-cutter approach to, to affordable housing. And again, the work that POF has done in reaching out to the stakeholders in the neighborhoods, whether it's the East Bluff, as we did the 30 homes, we did the Attorney General Grant before that, and, and the work that you did in engaging, and, and your own story of how your, your perspective has changed. We are going to have single-family homes available for sale. When Habitat comes in, and the project going down the old school sites is something that we have not seen before. So to, to insinuate that we're down the path to disaster, I think, is very, very inappropriate. I think we've learned from what some of the old projects look like that have been replaced, and we're being very conscientious as we move forward. So I, I, I think we're fortunate to have partners like Habitat and Peoria Opportunities in Peoria that share our vision and that listen to what our residents want. And again, thank you for the, the work, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to set the record straight, first of all, I have all the respect in the world for my fellow councilors here. Secondly, I, I am not predicting that we're going down the road to disaster. Also, I have no problem whatsoever with rental housing. And I really do not have any problem with something like Habitat for Humanity. I confess, I do have a problem with multifamily housing in difficult neighborhoods. I think we should do much more in the way of the, of the promotion of good rental housing in those neighborhoods, mainly from existing people there. Though a $25 million investor, I, I isn't probably going to be interested in that. But I think we get dollar signs in our eyes, and I think we're all, we all do that. I, but I am very much, I mean, I was a renter when I started out. I think most everyone's a renter when they start out. I don't have any particular problem with rental housing. But the rental housing that we've had, I think, if we gave it the kind of attention we give multifamily housing or brand-new housing, we would have a better city. And, but it's a little bit more difficult. So, but thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and thank you for your comments.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Item A and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion on Item B? Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It appears that the actual name of the grant was not typed correctly on this. So if I may correct that with my motion, that we're adopting an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2025 Revised Budget relating to the general funds to recognize receipt of the IDA, and then it's the Strong Community Program Grant in the amount of $475,000, and to adjust the attached budget amendment to reflect the correct wording and dollar amount.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimous, unanimously. Thank you, Director Doolin, and your team. Madam Clark?
25-149 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month-ended April 30, 2025, un-audited financial report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to our finance director, Director Kyle Craddy.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. First, thank you, Councilman Reganbach, for amending that. That was my typo, so I just wanted to say that for the record. So it wasn't perceived that that was Joe Staff, that was me. The April, the month, the April 30 month-end report in front of you tonight, I'm happy to report that on the revenue side, we're pretty much flat with where we anticipated for budget. And we are also up 2.5% compared to, to last year. On the expense side, expenses are down 5.2% compared to the expected budget and down about 7.3% compared to where we were last year. Some of that has to do with, with grant funding, but I think really when we're seeing our expenses going, declining faster than our revenues, that's actually a good sign for the, for the budget's health for the rest of the year. What we are seeing, if you go to the next pages of the report, we continue to see strong home rule and state sales taxes. This will be the first month of this report that shows really some of the changes that occurred in state law associated with out-of-state sales taxes, as well as sales tax on rental, certain pieces of rental equipment. We have a couple of months of, of data so far, but we are actually seeing stronger-than-anticipated sales taxes so far through this year. You know, a few months doesn't necessarily make a trend, but I wanted to point out that we are seeing some relatively strong sales tax numbers. And with that, that's really the main part of the report for tonight, and I'm available if council has any questions.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Craddy, for your report. Just a couple of questions, and first off, beginning with some observations. So looking at the report, I'm noticing that compared to last year, our home sales tax, our state's tax, and then also our income taxes are all up compared to last year, which is a, a good sign there. And then I noticed, you know, you may elaborate a little bit on it, though. It said that our revenues were behind a little bit, and you said that was because of some of the grant reimbursements?
Yeah, so, you know, we, thinking back to last year, we obviously had a, a stronger amount of grant dollars, including federal dollars, especially in the ARPA program. So how we treat our grant dollars is we have the, we tie our revenues to those expenditures. And so because we have less grant dollars and less grant projects this year than we did last year, really that lag you're seeing or that difference is related to those grants.
Okay, thank you. And then I noticed that the, and it said as of April of '25, the bridge loan has been paid in fullback by the Civic Center. You care to elaborate on that, sir?
Yeah, so the, the grant that the, that the Civic Center received from the state, we provided them some financial support to be able to make those payments while they waited for reimbursement. They have paid the city back in totality. There are some remaining projects related to that work. Really, the, the agreement that we have with them kicks in at, at any point that they have reserve levels of their cash on hand drop below $1 million. That is not something I've heard from them as a concern anytime in the near future with these projects, but as of right now, it's paid back in full.
Thank you for that, and I guess I want to give kudos to whoever is managing that grant on their behalf, because doing those reports to the state of Illinois and making sure they're timely, you have all the data to ensure you get reimbursed timely, is not always an easy task. So definitely want to give a shout out to the Civic Center, whoever's managing that grant. Thank you, Director Craddy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, just a two or three question and a comment. Page 411, some of my comp, question tonight would be for, a question I received from my constituent. We're talking about 22%, and we're talking about 17%. I'm not looking to give you more work, but explain to us a couple of things. Number one is on the revenue side, this is not a linear budget or forecast. Can you explain that a little bit? And then the second, I guess I'll put as a request, would it be possible, instead of talking in percentages, maybe in dollar amount? Like when we're, you know, 22% behind or 17% behind? Would that be too much work for you to maybe have dollar amounts? So, so are constituents really understand what these numbers mean?
No, that wouldn't be that difficult at all. We can kind of add that to the report for a little bit of additional clarity. In terms of kind of your first question is, you know, a lot of times, people look at budgets as being linear. So what that means is you anticipate getting 1/12th of your revenue every month, or spending 1/12th of your expenditures on a monthly basis. That is definitely not how we work. The efforts that we put into the budget process, obviously from what council sees through the process of approval, we then take those numbers and try to put together what our anticipated budget is based off of when we believe we should receive revenues and when we believe we'll have expenditures. Do we always get it right? No, but I think to your point, Councilman, like, these are not necessary linear budgets. And I think to a point you made at the last meeting, you know, really, when you're talking about the general fund, you know, we have deficit spending to this point in the year of about $10 million. We anticipate that that will get closer to that $1.5 million of a loss that was budgeted for use of, for use of the reserves by year end. But I will also say, if you compare it to where we were last year, we were $15 million behind last year at this point. So we're actually seeing some progress in terms of what those numbers look like. And that really goes back to that, really, the budget not being linear.
I'm sorry, we talked so late today, so I didn't get a chance, or I didn't give you a chance to maybe prepare. Let's talk just real briefly about ending fund balances. There's three of them that are negative. Any concern about those three that are negative, negative territory?
No, you know, I think the CBG in Home one that's on there, that one really just has to do with us having expenditures out and how that process goes through. We have to request the funding from the federal government, so that's really why that one's in negative territory. Stadium TIF is a smaller amount that will correct itself through the next remaining years of the TIF. Obviously, the large one, and I know we talk about a lot, is going to be the Garbage Fund. That is anticipated to get closer to that $0 amount around 2028 with some of the changes that were made with the landfill contract. So we should start to see that number get closer to $0 around 2028. And then the last one is on the IMRF Fund. So if you remember back when the city offered the early retirement incentive back in 2021, we did a loan from the OPEB Fund to pay back, or to pay for that, that cost at a lower interest rate than what IMRF was going to charge us. And so reality, what shows here is really that due to the OPEB Fund. So really, when you strip away what that loan is, we're actually above the 25% fund balance target in that specific fund. So I'm not worried really long-term about any of these not being something that's going to get corrected over time.
Thank you for this explanation. Another question is about, I expect a new line item in our budget for 2026, which should be called Cannabis Revenue. Can you tell us a little bit the rules and why so far it's been four or five years we've not seen anything about that yet? And hopefully, we'll see something for the '26 budget.
Yeah, so, so those dollars, obviously, currently still sit in our budget, but we put those all together under our general sales tax line item. And that primarily is because the city does receive confidential statements from the state of Illinois to, in terms of really how much revenue we're receiving from each business type. The rule of thumb with the Department of Revenue is that you need to have five businesses before you can report those in totality. The city is now at a point where we do have five cannabis dispensaries operating. So I do anticipate, just with one final check-in with the Department of Revenue to make sure we're not going over our skis on this one, I do anticipate that we should be able to report to councils during the next budget process what our anticipated revenues are. revenues are from cannabis sales tax.
Last question, Mr. Craddy. I believe it's been proven by the, how can I call them, professional, that are economists, are professional economists. I believe they have proven over the last many months since the tariffs have been the, you know, the subject of many talks. So you and I had some discussion about the tariffs, and obviously, I think we believe that example, some are revenue, sales tax revenue example, like people trying to beat the deadline, whatever that means, will buy a car now versus later, or refrigerator, or furniture, or whatever, you know, so they can buy at hopefully a more affordable price today. That's what's their feeling. Tell me how we adjust, make adjustment or recommendation on your side, because, I mean, we're counting on you and City Manager. Any recommendation or any adjustment yet that we need to make? Because I believe that, you know, our voters have spent a lot more money than they would have if people would not be talking about tariffs. So can you expand on this a little bit?
Yeah, so I think, as I shared with council, I think at a previous meeting, really our first indicator for us isn't necessarily going to be sales tax because of the three-month lag from the state. So even the sales tax reported on here, our April paid for March sales. So we don't even, the next report will have those April sales, which is really when the tariff conversation started and a lot of this rush or anxiety began. The first real indication for us was more around our HRA taxes. And what we're seeing is really about a 2% decline across really the entire gamut of some of our HRA taxes. It's not enough yet for me to come to council and say that I think it's potentially problematic, but those are really the two areas that if I start to see problems, that I will be reporting to council in this report, as well as during this presentation, to say that there might be some difficult waters ahead.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, did you get any, has there been anything definitive that the legislature has done in this session to find out exactly where the personal property replacement tax is going to end up? Has there been any? Yes, go ahead.
So the best estimate that we have is, the one thing I cannot necessarily give you any clarity on yet is, are there additional clawbacks in the FY26 budget in terms of pulling back some of the additional revenues that were provided to the city back in '22 and '23? What I can say is there was close to $400 million in diversions out of the PPRT Fund to other state departments, which is in line with really the estimates that IML had provided us, was built into this year's budget and will continue to build in. But there was additional diversions this year out of the PPRT Fund as part of this budget.
You mean further than in previous years?
So it is, every year has close to that amount. It really is more, it's just, it's still going to be revenue we're not receiving.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion to receive and file? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. No. Then we're on to new business.
A new business. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, I should have done it while we were discussing it. I would like to compliment the town of Peoria and its fabulous electors for putting forward that resolution on elections, where in our case, at large, in mayor, citywide, people who run city, and district-wide too, I'm sorry. We had to have so many more signatures this year. It was crazy. It was because we were not Democrat or Republican. And so hats off to them. I hope, I hope we can convince the legislature to follow along with our brilliant voters here. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. Mr. Manager, you and I spoke yesterday in our monthly one-on-one, but just for the record and for my colleagues, I would like a report back. Many times, I'm sure, like all of you, we get asked about, you know, what grant opportunities are available with the city of Peoria, what funding opportunities to support small businesses. In the last several years, we've been very fortunate because of our American Rescue Plan Funds to provide the RISE Grants, the commercial renovation grants, some of those smaller grants where people were, you know, receiving $10,000 to $30,000, which was a game changer for our small businesses. And we know, unfortunately, the spigot is turned off going into this year's budget. So I've asked for the manager to write a report back on what economic development tools that we have, that when we get those inquiries from small businesses, that we can point them in the right direction so they can still feel supported here within the city of Peoria. And then the second thing, I did read a proclamation earlier, an observation of Juneteenth, and I just want to highlight that we have many Juneteenth celebrations happening in the area. All of these are listed on the Peoria website at peoria.gov.org. You type in "Juneteenth." But this Saturday, it'll kick off with the Ernestine Jackson Juneteenth Freedom Parade at 12:00 PM, followed by Juneteenth Fest with its theme of Black Wall Street that will be occurring at the legendary Peoria Carver Center. So invite everyone out to come out this weekend, celebrate Juneteenth, have a good time, and be safe. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this is new business, but Director Doolin tried to hand the microphone to Mr. Hayes earlier, and I'm curious about our department. How are we doing? And maybe give you a chance to say a few words. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
No, Madam Miss.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Who are we waiting on?
Mr. Hayes, report.
Okay.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Council Hayes, please.
Thank you very much. I would note that the challenge to our department was basically to double our capacity to do the legal end of demolitions. The Community Development Department does an excellent job identifying the parcels that might be eligible for demolition, and then providing all that information about ownership and the condition of the property to the legal department, who then files a lawsuit for each and every one of those demolitions and goes through a number of statutory notice provisions, as well as the court process to get to a final order where we are entitled to either take ownership of the property or at least demolish the property. And, you know, we went from never having done more than 100 demolitions to last year doing nearly 200. I'm immensely proud of our staff, London Pickett, who does most of the staff work involving our demolition process, the lawyers that aid that process, Maz Perkins, Max Walton, and Isabella France, who have done a tremendous job. They're supported by other members of the department as well, and really rely on the Community Development Department to do the front end of that work. But I am immensely proud of them, and thank you for the opportunity to note that. I know the conversation was dynamic on that issue, but celebrating our employees when they exceed the performance of their peers and are rewarded with hundreds of thousands of dollars of funds to improve our communities, it really did put a bounce in the step of my staff, and they're still enjoying that. And I think they'll enjoy tonight's discussion as well. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations to your whole department.
Clerk Tar, did you have an item?
Yes, I did. Thank you. If I could just have a little bit. I just wanted to share that the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks Organization will be hosting its biennial Back to Basics Training Conference here in Peoria. This event is designed for newly-elected and appointed clerks from across the state. So we have them from all the way up to the north, to south, east, and west. They're all coming to Peoria, Illinois. And it's for current clerks as well to brush up on their skills and stay informed on new practices. So we've had mayors, we've had city managers reach out to us in the last couple of weeks because they've had newly-appointed clerks who need trained in their position. And it's not something that you can just step into lightly. There's a whole lot to it. It's a clerk-to-clerk training, so myself and Courtney Coe and my chief deputy, of course, Trina Bonds, will be assisting with the training and with a number of other clerks. And it's focused on the core responsibilities of the office, including but not limited to like the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act, and the Local Records Act. The conference will begin on Thursday afternoon and continues through Friday at the Holiday Inn and Suites at the Shops of Grand Prairie. And then, of course, due to overwhelming interest, we've had to up our rooms over and over. We have over 100 clerks coming. They all couldn't stay at the Holiday Inn, so we had to get a sister hotel for them to stay. They're all excited, and we're proud to welcome them to the city of Peoria. It's an important training opportunity. So I just want to say thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things. For those of you that work downtown, you've probably noticed the influx of pedestrian traffic with Caterpillar back full force five days a week downtown. There's a lot of action going on. We want to welcome all of our food cart vendors to take advantage of that influx of population. And of course, we have construction going around the courthouse this year, so there's always a challenge. But we do have one dude, if you will, that has a nice hot dog stand that's out every day, rain or shine, at Main and Adams. So just put a plug in for his persistence. And two weeks ago, I had asked the chief to give us a report back on the Neighborhood Service Unit, the residential officers. Would it be all right if Assistant Chief Dixon give us that report briefly?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm just going to give you kind of a quick overview. And if there's, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. But our current Neighborhood Services, we lean on them frequently. I was out with them on two different things today, a downtown issue and then another issue. So they are frequently called, and I tell them if it doesn't round peg, if it doesn't fit in there, we lean on our Neighborhood Services. So they are understaffed, as with a couple other units, and I'll touch on that as well. But we have a NSU Sergeant, which is Sergeant Watkins, if you're familiar with him. He does a great job. And then we have currently our Nuisance Abatement Officer, we lost to a promotion, but we have transferred an officer from Patrol, regular Patrol, to our Neighborhood Services. So that is a temporary transfer. We're looking to fill that. And then we have three resident officers and a community engagement officer. We have one house that is currently vacant, and we're looking to fill that. So the house on Madison is currently vacant. We've got a couple more small repairs on the house, then we'll be able to fill it. The position for that house just was posted today, so we'll see what kind of interest we have in the house. But we've got some contractual obligations on how long we wait for them to put in, and then we can interview for the position. Our current staffing is at 227 on paper, but that's on paper. I always tell people it takes 10 minutes to retire and 10 months to replace them. So we have 34 officers either in our training program or at PTI, and they're not available to put in those positions. And then we have another 17 officers that are off for another various reasons, and I won't go into details on that, but it's a whole spectrum of reasons why they might not be available. So that puts our operating numbers at about 175 officers total from top to bottom, and we can't pull from Patrol to fill those positions currently. So the soonest, it depends who puts in for the position and where they're at within the department, whether we fill that. But our next push of officers coming out of training, out of that bucket of 34 officers, will be in August. So we'll look to fill that house in August. We are, our next push is September, November, September, October, November, depending how they do, out of that same bucket. We anticipate out of the other 17 I mentioned, some of those officers will be back as well. So the future is looking good. We have good numbers. You know, it's a, I want to give credit to our recruitment team, our physical fitness team. They're doing a great job putting officers in the door, but it takes an incredible amount of training to actually get them on the street. So we are catching up. We're close. It's just going to take a little bit before we can backfill some of these positions. But I'm anticipating at the latest in August, backfilling the neighborhood house down in Madison. And then we need, one of our priorities is to look in our East Bluff and get a house up there. We don't have a physical house. We would love to get one up there. We hear from the neighbors all the time. So quite frankly, every time I go to a neighborhood meeting, I hear about they want a neighborhood house. So it's very popular. We get a lot of great feedback from it, a lot of great community engagement. And quite frankly, they do a lot of great work for the city. So I would, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good update. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three items. First, I want to say welcome back to the City Manager. I know he's been on vacation. And I had requested, I think was during the time the contract was approved with GFL, an update on the tireless project, sir? Could I get a report back on where we are with that? The other one was involving, is involving the stormwater projects. How many have we undertaken in the last couple years? And where, the areas where the work has taken place?
We have a policy session next Tuesday night, and we're going to walk over all of that information.
Okay, okay. And I know, I think it was mentioned that you would have an update on the CSO during that policy session.
That's correct.
And will that include, I'd like to know, areas that are included under the CSO? What areas? Because I had raised a question about some of the work going further south because there was an area down where, down on Kraus where no sidewalks, and we've got handicap people living around there.
That area is outside of the CSO work that we're talking about, but we can have a map that we can show you what the CSO area includes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And lastly, I just want to remind everyone that our annual State of the City event will take place on Thursday, June the 26th. This time is a lunchtime event rather than an evening event. So I think it starts at 11:00, but the council will get an email out encouraging you to confirm your attendance for Thursday, June 26th, sponsored by the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce. Any other new business? Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are at Citizens Opportunity to Address the City Council.
We only have one card, and it was from Dr. Singh and Colonel Sinkler, who we heard from earlier. Did you have any final comments?
We just want to say thanks for your support.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following the adjournment of the City Council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C5 to discuss the purchase of real property for the use of the public body, including discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired in pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C21 for approval by the body of the closed session minutes. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service.